Yeah, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the Oakley Area School Board to order. Terry, can you please confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
We are.
And if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Tao.
Yeah.
Commissioner Zur.
Here.
Commissioner Beeka.
Here.
Commissioner Demant.
Here.
Commissioner Farrar.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Nardine.
Here.
You. Our first order of business tonight is adjournment to closed session. We will be discussing the annual level movement for staff. So I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session under nineteen point eight five one C. Move.
Yeah.
You moved.
There. Yeah.
Moved in second. Terry, when you're ready, please, a roll call vote.
Commissioner Tao.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeka.
Yes.
Commissioner Demant.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine.
Yes. We're adjourned to closed session. We'll reconvene at approximately seven PM.
We'll reconvene our meeting here in open session. During closed session, the board approved level movement for staff for the upcoming year. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge of allegiance leader is Tevin Myers, a fifth grader from Locust Lane. Tevin is an energetic student who remains engaged in the classroom and always willing to share background knowledge and life adventures with the class. Tevin is an avid sports card collector and quite the athlete. He plays basketball through Husky Hoops, baseball through Seymour, and has traveled to Minneapolis, Chicago, Indianapolis, and soon sunny Flora playing flag football through Northwest Champions. Tevin, we're glad you're here with us tonight to lead the pledge of allegiance. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation in arms of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I would hear a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting. Second. Motion to adopt tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Official. We'll start as we always do with recognitions. I get to do the first one tonight, and we're very excited that she was able to join us for our self-evaluation retreat. This is our newest board member, Pot House. First regular meeting, and so I can say, I think on behalf of the entire board, we're very excited to serve with you and welcome. I hope you all join me in a round of applause for our new member. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for the remainder of the recognitions.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Dean, board members, student representatives, and distinguished guests. We have a few this evening. At the very end, we've got certificates for the folks that are here. First off, February marks Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. Also known as African American History Month, the event grew from advocacy from historian Carter, G. Woodson, and other prominent African Americans. Since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Other countries around the world, including Canada and the UK, also devote a month to celebrating black history. Secondly, National School Counseling Week celebrated the first full week of February, recognized the vital roles professional school counselors play in the lives of our students, families, and our Eau Claire community. All of our district student school counselors are licensed professionals who hold at a minimum a master's degree in school counseling. They're at the center of the problem-solving process and can help safeguard the mental and emotional well-being of students and parents alike. The work of our school counselors is multifaceted as they work to ensure students' well-being and success. Thanks for all you do for our families, students, and staff. How many school counselors do we have in attendance this evening? Hello? Pardon?
We don't have any tonight.
Okay. Would you be willing, Kristy, to come up and later on?
Great.
That's good. Good. Thank you. Third, we're so fortunate to have an amazing food nutrition staff who work tirelessly to support our students and families all year long. Every year, they go above and beyond in helping with food needs. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Lisa Smith is our food nutrition director. She is here tonight. I do believe there were a couple that were supposed to stay in and stay warm for some reason. It's Lisa. Our fourth recognition last week was School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. This is a great opportunity for our parents, students, teachers, motorists, school bus operators, school administrators, and other interested parties to join and discuss the importance of school bus safety. Student Transit has been proudly serving our community schools since 1939, and we recognize all school transportation personnel for the critically important work they do to ensure that our students have a safe and reliable way to get to and from school every day. Do we have any folks from Student Transit here this evening? Excellent. We've got some drivers. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Next, State Superintendent Jill Underley has declared this week as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week. I know we have some in attendance this evening. Adult School Crossing Guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our students walking between home and school. They do this all with a mission focus on helping students safely navigate city streets, county roads, and highways, and serve with dedication in the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, heavy traffic, and inattentive drivers on their cell phones. We are so appreciative of all our crossing guards and everything they do to keep students safe. I think we've got a few tonight. We've got Chris, Cheryl, Earl, Mark, Stan, Sam, and Carrie. So I'm glad you're here this evening. Our public schools, next week is our Wisconsin Public Educational Network celebrates Public Schools Week in Wisconsin. This is an annual event celebrating the amazing things that happen every day in our public schools and sharing our appreciation for our educators and the value of a great public education. Public Schools Week is celebrated by the National School Boards Association and other organizations and partners across around the country and throughout Wisconsin. In addition, Resolution in Support of We Love Our Public Schools Week is part of our board's consent agenda tonight. And finally, our Eau Claire School Resource Officers, celebrating National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, February 15th. Our SROs bridge the gaps between our youth and law enforcement. These officers fill a three-part role, serving as informal mentors or counselors, law educators, and law enforcement officers to support the student staff and law enforcement officers to support the students, staff, and communities they serve. They're valuable and essential members of our educational community who deserve unwavering respect and support in the pursuit of keeping our schools and students safe. We truly value this partnership with our Eau Claire Police Department. The connections they make with the students, staff, and families of Eau Claire is appreciated. Pictured here this evening, we've got Detective Tom Jeong from North Star Middle School, Matty Hare from DeLong Middle, Noah Young from South Middle, Ellen Scott from Memorial, and Zach Becker from North High. Do we have some of our SROs or any SROs? Wonderful, so you'll get to come up and get a picture taken as well. That's it this evening for our recognitions, and we'll take some pictures right now. School counselors, first up. Next, Lisa.
Josh.
Good.
Right there, that's perfect.
Okay. All three, one, two, three. Yep, I got it.
Thank you.
Are SROs?
It's a.
All three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Now move on to our public forum. Board allows community members to sign up in advance, up to four minutes, to address the board. When your name is called, please just come up to the podium there, restate your name, and you'll have a timer to watch. I apologize in advance, I will cut you off after your four minutes. The board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in our public forum. First speaker tonight is Arla Preston.
Hi, I'm Arla Preston, and I'm a volunteer, a grandparent volunteer for Chippewa Valley Montessori charter school. I have two children, grandchildren that are there, and it's my first exposure, even though I have been a professional teacher in my career, retired now. And I've heard about Montessori, and studied a little bit about it in my preparation, but I never saw it in action. I got here early because it was cold out there and I didn't want to sit in my car, and I read your mission statement, and I can't help but think just how true to form that school is to inspire and prepare our students to live creative, fulfilling, and responsible lives. I work with two different teachers, all morning on Mondays. I call it my Montessori Mondays. At the end of the year, I intend to try to surprise the children with M&amp;Ms. You figure out why that might be. And I have had an opportunity to see them in action. What I'm always surprised to see is how much excitement and creativity is experienced in these, the first, second, and third-year students that are there. They all have the same type of goals they're shooting for, but nonetheless, they have different ways of approaching it. It's interesting to me to see that across the curriculum, they use a lot of different things regardless of what their actual status is. So let's say FIED, and yet they've got math, and they've got literature that they're referring to things, or certainly reading, because there's things on the wall that they have to read. And I find the same thing to be true in art and in music, where they actually have some rhythms that are going on, but they have self-selection. So each of the children have a chance to find what mode they want to study. They get the same thing accomplished, but they do it in different ways that's exciting for them. So for an example, just because I'm sure if I didn't understand it, you probably have not had the exposure either, Montessori, I'm going to just take something I had this past week, which was music. And they were working at looking at rhythms. They were using technology, but they were also using their instruments and looking at what type of instrument, how were they woods, were they metals, were they drums, so that type of thing. The terminology was there, the experience of using them, self-choice, they could choose which ones they wanted to use. They all had the same songs that they were using in the use of their iPad, but it was really encouraging to see how excited they were when they had some self-choice that was involved in it. So I was surprised, I guess, to compare what I saw in my traditional classroom instruction and what I see in Montessori with both of them being equally good, not one better, one worse, but equally good, but different approaches maybe to get to the same outcome. So I thought maybe coming as a grandparent, that I could provide for you a little bit of insight into what is going on at that school, because sometimes it seems a little curious. As Montessori, we've heard about it, we just don't know very much about it, so maybe you've had a little bit more of an eyes bird's view. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight, and I also want to thank you for being here and being of service to our students and to our community. Thank you very much.
You. That concludes our public forum for the evening. We'll now go on to our legislative liaison, Commissioner Demant.
Thank you, Chair Nardine. So I am actually going to read directly from the legislative update from WASB because the first batch of educational bills have headed to the Assembly floor, and I think it's important we talk about those. Related to the changes, the first one is AB1 relating to the changes to the Educational Assessment Program and the School and School District Accountability Report. Essentially, this bill would require DPI to use the Cut Score Score ranges corresponding qualitative descriptions for report codes, as was used in 2019, 2020 SchoolU. Additionally, they are going to require DPI to align Cut Score Score ranges and pupil performance categories from the Wisconsin Forward Exam to the performance category set by the National Assessment of Educational Programness, and as well as using the same Cut Score Score ranges and pupil performance categories, DPI, used for the same assessments for the pre-ACT and ACT in 21 and 22. It also requires us to use the terms below basic, basic proficient, and advanced for pupil performance. AB3 is relating to the incorporation of cursive writing in the state model of English Language Arts Standards and requiring cursive writing in elementary grades, which is exactly what it says on the tin. They want people to be able to write in cursive by the end of fifth grade. AB4 is related to the required instruction of civics in the elementary and high school grades, high school graduation requirements, and private school educational programs. There is an entire list of things that the legislature would like high school seniors to be able to do regarding civics before they are able to graduate. The next one is AB5 relating to the requiring school boards to make textbooks, curricula, and instructional materials available for inspection by school district residents. This would require school districts to respond to requests to inspect textbooks, curriculum, and instructional material within 14 days. AB6, which is relating to the requiring school board to spend at least 70% of its operating expenditures on direct classroom expenditures, and annual pay increases for school administrators, which makes me think the legislature was not paying attention when 138 school districts went to F WINDM because we cannot pay for anything. So those are the bills going to the Assembly floor. It is unclear what their status will be once they get to the Assembly people. Thank you.
You. We'll now move on to the consent agendas. For each of our consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. The board has been provided background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, it will be sent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent's consent agenda includes Human Resources Employment Report and Referendum Project bids. Your motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
I'm moved. Second.
You end with the referendum project being financial. Terry, when you're ready, please roll call vote. A motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Commissioner Tao?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Commissioner Demant?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Superintendent's consent agenda is approved. Now move on to the board's consent agenda, which this meeting has minutes of closed session, January 27, 2025. Minutes of board meeting, January 27, 2025. Minutes of closed session, February 7, 2025. Minutes of board meeting, February 7, 2025. Board summary statement for OE5 Student Success. Board summary statement for OE11 Asset Protection. And Resolution in Support of We Love Our Public Schools Week. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda. Motion to approve the board's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The board's consent agenda is approved. We have one matter reserved for board action on our agenda tonight, and that is our annual petitions from the community for alterations to our school district boundaries. This is a once-per-year event, so I will ask all of you to bear with me a little bit if I fumble some of the motions. Thank you, Terry, for providing all of the information that we need for this. We'll have each of our petitioners called forward to state their petition, and then we'll end up, we'll turn it over then to Dr. Mark Elworthy to district's recommendation. After we begin the petition, sorry, after we begin the hearing, I will turn it over to Dr. Elworthy for a brief intro before we go on to the individual petitions. At this time, I would hear a motion to temporarily suspend our regular rules to allow petitioners to speak and present during a public hearing. So moved. Motion to suspend the rules to allow petitioners to speak and present during a public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? All right, we have begun our hearing. Dr. Elworthy?
Thank you, President Nardine. Just as a reminder, petitions are due prior to February 1st, requiring, and then board action no later than March 1st. No board action means a denial. This year, there's a little wrinkle, if you will. In front of you last year was a petition by the Pergots to attach. That went through, they appealed up to the School District Boundary Appeals Board, and then started some conversations with the School District, actually during the Appeals Board, in terms of future options, or would there be another property that would do a land swap? And so this year, what is different is there, as President Nardine said, there are small partitioned parcel detachment petitions, which you hear, but there also are, we've been working with the Durand Arkansas School District to do a land swap under 11713. And so there's several different ways to address questions in terms of attachment, detachment. So the first two pertain to Durand, Arkansas. I'm happy to provide some perspective, but please note then there are three other petitioners who will speak in front of the board, but then there is additional two others on a 117.13, which is district-initiated. And again, it's something that we've worked with Superintendent Ryan Nelson and the president of the Durand Arkansas School Board. How did this come about? Historically, the short version is in the 1920s, 1930s, state of Wisconsin had about 8,000 school districts, yes, the one-room schoolhouses. The goal was to have fewer school districts, and in the end, there was a statute passed that each school district had to have a high school. It took to the 50s and 60s for this to happen, and there's always this opportunity for for landowners to decide or suggest once on a border whether or not that, you know, this is where they'd like to be, or would they like to be in a neighboring district. During the consolidation timeframe in the 50s and 60s, things were contentious. Oftentimes, school boards went to the property owners and said, where would you like to be? And oftentimes, they chose the district in which their children were currently attending. That's why you see a lot of petitions or boundaries being not straight lines, but based on property owner choice. So thank you for the opportunity for a little history, little introduction, and happy to be a resource along the way. Thank you.
You. And at this time, I would invite Jennifer and Travis Smith forward to discuss their petition.
I do believe they are not in attendance tonight.
Thank you. And Dr. Elworthy, I had to ask you to summarize the administration's recommendation to the board and before we have a chance to act.
Correct. So recommendation is to deny, as I referenced before. We have come to an agreement with the Durand Arkansas School District to pursue it in a different way. So recommendation is deny the petition. Perspective, we could not, how should I put it? The, there's another petition. Petitions have a one-year waiting period. Once they're submitted, there's for all parties, a cooling-off period, and my recommendation is the board, and the other one is not to waive for purposes of policy. So the recommendation is to deny the petition request as we have negotiated a different avenue, solution.
You. Then at this time, I would hear a motion to deny the petition of Jennifer and Travis Smith.
I'm moved.
Second. Before we go on to any discussion on the motion, for those of you that are regular watchers of the school board meeting, we're going to start using a slightly different protocol to recognize speakers for board and student rep comments in a randomized order. So for discussion on the motion, if you don't have anything that you'd like to add, just feel free to wave it on past Dr. Bika.
Commissioner Demant. If you all can do this in a different way, then that's fine with me. Yeah.
Commissioner Zer. Dr. Farrar. Commissioner Tao. Dr. Johnson.
Just ensure that the opportunity to abstain vote comes.
Yes, thank you. And student reps. Okay. Dr. Bika.
You know that Ms. Feedy is joining online tonight?
I don't.
But she's there.
Mr. Oldenburg, would you be so kind as to turn that big monitor on my side, the other one, towards me a little bit more? That might allow me to see representative Feedy if she's to get in. Thank you. You, Dr. Okay. Hearing none, then the motion is to deny the petition of Jennifer and Travis Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the abstentions?
Aye.
Petition of the Smiths is denied. At this time, I would invite forward Margot and Bryce Purgat to discuss their petition.
Do you want me, am I going to be able to talk on the detachment and the small territories or talk on the petition actually switch? Because I think they're kind of, kind of the two of the same things.
You'll get a chance also to speak at the following motion, your Mr. Purgat?
Yeah, yeah, I'll probably just talk on the detachment and attachment. I'll just leave the whole one of the petition actually.
Okay.
Switch the headers.
No problem. All right.
We do need.
You're right, I need a sec. You're right, thank you. This is why I asked for some grace. Thank you, Terry. Before we move on to Dr. Elworthy, your recommendation for this petition, we do need a secondary motion on all of these. I would hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order of denial for the Smith petition. So this is just formalizing the vote we just made.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. It's gonna go straight ahead and use this almost as a consent type agenda without discussion on the on the um resolutions, since we've already voted on the actual uh petition itself. So all those in favor of adopting the resolution authorizing issuance of denial for Jennifer and Travis Smith's petition, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson. Alright, so that resolution is adopted. Uh, and now, Dr. Elworthy, the district's admin- the district's recommendation on the Purgit.
Right. Administration of recommendation is to deny the waiver of the waiting period of waiving the waiting period of one year. So it is a denial of the I'm not speaking as well. Recommend to deny the the petition because the district recommends that we not waive the waiting period as a matter of policy. Thank you.
So at this time, I would hear a motion to deny the petition of Margot and Bryce Purgit.
Moved. Second.
Thank you. So motion to deny the Purgit's petition. Dr. Becca. Commissioner Dement. Commissioner Zur. Dr. Farrar. Commissioner Tao. Dr. Johnson. Student reps, including representative Feedy. Hearing none, we'll call the question. Uh, the motion is to deny the petition of Margot and Bryce Purgit to alter school district boundaries. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Uh, then a motion to adopt a resolution. I would hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order of denial for the Purgit's request.
I'm moved.
Second. Thank you. Moved and seconded motion to adopt a resolution denying the Purgit's request. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. Any abstentions? Alright.
An abstention.
Yep.
Uh, next up, I would invite Matthew Malmberg. Come up to the the front and uh tell us about your petition.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, I recently moved to Elk Mound in December twenty twenty-three. I bought a property from Todd and Terry Solley. The property is originally zoned uh in Elk Mound. It's addressed Elk Mound. I'm on Elk Creek. Um, they actually got the property into the Eau Claire School District a few years ago, so their kids could uh play hockey in Eau Claire. Um, and so then I bought the property, so that's no longer an issue. So it was originally zoned in Elk Mound. Uh, my significant other's in Elk Mound. Her kids are at Elk Mound. She's a teacher in the Elk Mound School District. All my friends, next-door neighbors are all Elk Mound, so I just wanna move the property back to its original state of being Elk Mound School District. So that's my that's my request.
You. And Dr. Elworthy, the district's recommendation.
Yes, uh, as the petitioner stated, uh, this was detached from Elk Mound. Um, but please note that it actually went all the way up to the state level. The SDB, SDBAB uh board overturned decisions and put placed it into Eau Claire Area School District. District recommendation is to deny, as it's the property owner's responsibility to know where the residence is, which school district it is in.
You. Uh, for simplicity, we'll just, I I will ask for a motion based on the administration's recommendations, and then the board is free to discuss and vote as we choose. Uh, so I would hear a motion to deny the petition of Matthew Malmberg to detach his property from the Eau Claire School District.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Again, the motion is to deny Mr. Malmberg's petition. Uh, comments or discussion? Dr. Becca. Commissioner Dement.
Um. I I have nothing. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Zur.
Uh, yeah, Dr. Elworthy, I'm wondering if you could speak to the the history of the of the appeals process. So what, do you know the history of how so did originally was the move into Eau Claire for the property denied? Like, how did, and then how how did it get to, how does one?
How's that happen?
To a state level and why was it overturned?
Right, there's always an appeals process, and so um I did look at the state order, so it was denied by one district by Eau Claire, probably accepted it. Then because of the denial, then it has to be appealed. Petitioner would have to appeal to this school district boundary appeals board, and then they uh overturned it based on the educational needs of the student. They, so there's seven um criteria. The board reviews it independently. They're a rulemaking board, and so they have the autonomy, and that's been supported by the Supreme Court, Wisconsin Supreme Court. They heard the case and sided with the petitioner, and it was placed in the Eau Claire School District.
Farrar. Commissioner Tao. Dr. Johnson. All board reps. Right, then uh the motion is to deny the petition of Mr. Malmberg. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Fine, it was Dr. Johnson and Commissioner Zur. And the abstentions. The motion is carried. Uh, the petition is denied. Uh, I then need a motion to adopt a resolution if the, oh, oh, excuse me, authorizing issuance of an order to alter school district boundaries for Mr. Malmberg's petition.
Be the.
Uh, yeah, you're right. Yes, sorry, the order of denial. Sorry, I'm just on the wrong line of the motions. Yes. So uh, let me restate. I would like a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order of denial for Mr. Malmberg's request.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adopt the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Same.
Erica.
Same two, yes. Any abstentions? Motion passes. I would now invite Maureen and Scott Merrick. That's their petition. So they are not in attendance. Dr. Elworthy, the recommendation from the administration.
Recommendation is, the administration is to deny the petition to detach for the reasons of it's the responsibility of the landowner to where the residence is specific to the school district.
You. We're out here a motion to deny the petition of Maureen and Scott Merrick to detach their property from the Eau Claire School District.
Moved. Second.
You moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Dr. Becca. Commissioner Dement.
No.
Commissioner Zur. Dr. Farrar. Commissioner Tao. Dr. Johnson. Student reps. Motion to deny the Merrick's petition. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Any abstention?
Eric Epstein.
Motion passes. The petition is denied. I would like to gain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order of denial for the Merrick's request. So.
Be glory.
Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing issuance of an order of denial for the Merrick's petition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Any abstention? Next, I would invite Sarah and Adam Boss to discuss their petition.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Sarah Boss. Uh, my husband would love to be here tonight, but he's at hockey practice. Um, we have uh we built a home six years ago, and um our driveway is in Eau Claire School District, but our home uh sits behind in the woods um a little bit further back. And of course, that boundary line goes right through that. So uh, it is Chippewa District now. I would like to be in the Eau Claire School District. Um, we are, um, the address is Eau Claire, but the driveway and the driveway is in the Eau Claire School District, but the house itself is in Chippewa. Uh, both of our neighbors on either side of us are Eau Claire School District, and they both have kids that are exactly the same age as mine and they're best friends. So we open enroll for the last five years. Um, and uh, they're allowed to ride the bus as long as one of those other children are riding the bus. Um, so we've been in sports, hockey's uh something I'm really wanna make sure that they get to play sports, the same kids all through their high school. That's important to us. Um, busing is something that I'm really concerned about, you know, if if I I want them to be, I wanna get communication from the busing company, which I right now I have to call ahead or I have to make arrangements, and that can be challenging for them sometimes. Um, if I wanna do anything for record or anything, I have to pay non-resident fees. Um, and uh, it's going to North Star next year would be half the distance to that school from our home as it would be to go to Chippewa Middle School. So um, the, if you look at the map, um, the way it goes, we're our driveway is right between there and and we'd really like to be a part of the Eau Claire School District um for a number of reasons. So um, with them redrawing lines this year, hopefully this could be part of something that would be accepted um for them as well. Um, but again, busing and communication is is probably one of my biggest things in sports, ensuring that they get to stay with their group of friends for duration of their school time.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Dr. Elworthy.
Yes, uh, some some information. So as referenced, when a property is in two school districts, and this does occur more often than we'd, than you really, it's just, it happens all all over the place. Um, the Supreme Court ruling is called the Thayer Rule. So you are the resident, the the school district that your house is in is where your child puts their head down. Now, the challenge uh specifically is when spaces were green. You heard one earlier where not not as well-developed, large properties, um right, right or wrong developers, or sometimes properties are subdivided, and one could have been in a school district, but because of a subdivision, or perhaps a family owns forty acres and then builds on a separate part of the property, you could uh change school districts. It is something that Superintendent Johnson and I talked about. Traditionally, school districts would accept property coming in. Uh, we, you know, I would acknowledge all the petitioners here in terms of the challenges they are. It is personal, so I don't wanna sound overly matter-of-fact. At the same time, in terms of recommendations, uh, you know, as you've heard before, we've denied for one reason, but then it's okay to accept. And so uh, our recommendation is to deny the petition because of the opportunities that currently exist. Um, open enrollment is an opportunity. Um, I I'm hopeful, uh, just as you will hear later on, that perhaps there could be property swaps, then we can work collaboratively, collaboratively moving forward. And so some of you may be wondering, how do you know so much? Uh, the team that I used to serve on at DPI was responsible for these petitions, hearing all these petitions, et cetera. So uh, it definitely is real. Uh, and but but in the end, our our recommendation is to deny the petition.
Thank you. You. Uh, given the administrative recommendation, I would hear a motion to deny the petition of Sarah and Adam Boss on their request to attach their property into the Eau Claire School District. Second. Or discussion on the motion. Dr. Becca.
I just wanna say to acknowledge what Dr. Elworthy said about the personal nature of these requests. If I understand the map correctly, it actually disrupts the property lines rather than remedying them. And so I would look forward to possibilities for swaps between the districts in the future.
Commissioner Dement. Um. Dr. Elworthy, could you expand on what Dr. Becca just said about disrupting the property lines? Um, I'm not and maybe I'm just not familiar with how property is assigned to school districts and whatnot.
Right, it it quite honestly is, um, first and foremost, if I go back to my introduction, when districts, when consolidations and reorganizations start happening, it's more finalized in the fifties and sixties. We now have four hundred and twenty-one school districts. Oftentimes, what has happened is a larger property is subdivided over time. Um, it's by decision of the property owners. Now, of course, those properties get sold over time, or perhaps the the owners don't have children, so it's just not a a point of uh contact, if you will, or impact on the family. And so that is all locally done based on um the properties are defined by assessors, but then within the school district, those lines are, were drawn uh previously by organizations of the school district. Of course, the modifications are, as as you hear tonight, petitions to either detach or attach, or there there are land swaps, and um again, I've reached out to every school district that had a detachment or attachment related to the Eau Claire School District, and I've offered an opportunity to talk. Those opportunities um sometimes take a couple months, or it takes longer than a a month or two in terms of this traditional sense. Sometimes districts will say, yep, it's okay. So uh, again, it's our rec, that's the administrative recommendation. I also understand it's it's the board's uh prerogative to act accordingly.
Does that help? Yeah, it does. Thank you. Commissioner Zur.
I don't have a question, but um I will say that um there 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 is more to um these decisions than um than, you know, whether it makes a pretty line or it um or it uh is in keeping with with what we've chosen to do previously. Obviously, it's very important to your family. Um, you're a part of our community. Um, and uh it seems um it seems unfair to the children um who's who, you know, have a community here um within their neighborhoods, and and we know from sitting on this board for a long period of time how important neighborhoods are um to the to the community, um, to the health and well-being of our kids. And uh, in this case, it it doesn't make sense to me to to deny this petition. Um, uh, you're a member of our family, and you should be a member of our family. Thanks.
Dr. Farrar.
Similarly, think that this um petition has a lot of merit. Uh, me that both neighbors on either side are in the Eau Claire Area School District, and the, it's a question of a driveway versus a a building. Uh, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, this is a, this is a neighborhood, um, and the students are a part of our neighborhood and um and part of our school community. So um, I I personally uh support the boss petition.
You. Commissioner Tao.
Um, I second what Dr. Farrar and Ariakas have mentioned earlier, and see no reason why to approve the petition.
Dr. Johnson. Go. Student reps. So the motion before the board is to deny the petition of Sarah and Adam Boss. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye and aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Uh, the motion is failed. I would therefore hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of an order to alter school district boundaries um based on the petition of Sarah and Adam Boss.
Wait.
Right.
So the motion first, I'm just confirming.
Should deny fail.
Fail. Correct. So now there's another motion, not an order. I just. Correct. So now there's another motion, not an order. I just need to have a motion to approve.
I think you have to do the motion to approve.
Let's meet after this for next year, because we should just do, if it's, if it's motion to approve is what we really need to move forward, and if that fails, then we can be done. But we just, I just want to talk.
I just want to talk about formation, because we, I think we can go, well, anyway, I would hear a motion to approve the boss's request, petition.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. I will proceed without discussion. All those in favor of the approval of the boss's petition, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Petition is approved. I would now hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order to alter school district boundaries based on the petition of Sarah and Adam Boss. Thank you. Motion to adopt a resolution as stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Dr. Vika? Just Dr. Vika.
Did you do any?
I voted in favor. We already approved the thing. There's no sense in holding up the resolution, in my view, but that's, that's why I voted yes.
All right. Dr. Elworthy, I think we're clear on that one, right? We've got it. Everything done? All right. Then at this time, I would invite Mr. Purgat forward to speak on the detachment and attachment of small territory initiated by school boards.
Skip and Smith.
Smiths are not here, and that's, they're both, so, I mean.
Yep, so.
Sorry, Mr. Purgat, be free. Dr. Elworthy, because it's together, I'm okay to just move, to do anything specific on the Smiths? Or do we, or can we, can I hear from Mr., can we hear from Mr. Purgat?
Hearing, so you, you are able to do that, and then you can combine both motions.
Thank you. I was, I was just thinking of the speakers, but you're right. So, Mr. Purgat, I'd invite you to speak on it, since obviously you're involved in this swap, and then we'll have, we'll vote on each of the items separately.
My daughter comes here, and we plan on having all our girls come here. Last year, we petitioned to alter the boundary, and you guys approved it, but Duran denied it immediately, and they were, denied it, and they told us it was over tax money. But then we went to the state, and then they brought it up to us at the state about after it all. They sent us emails saying, well, if you could find a property to swap, they would then entertain doing it. And so me and my wife went to our neighbors, and it was funny, his kids actually go to Duran. And he's an Eau Claire School District house, and we're a Duran house, and our kids go to Eau Claire. And the bus drives, well, the bus already drives right by our house, and so does the Duran bus. They both go right by our house, but neither will stop at either of our houses, just because we're not in their school districts, but they cross paths. So, so we went out of our way, and they agreed that it makes sense, and they agreed to it. And our houses are worth pretty close to equal value, and Duran told us to go with it. You know, we just, we entertained, and we had someone to switch, and we're email with the superintendent there. And so, you know, this is really what we want to do, and obviously with last year, and you guys are, you know, approved that part of it, but now we're kind of just going to do the swap instead. And we found, you know, like I said, we found a property owner that's willing to do it, do an equal switch. Their, you know, their kid goes to Duran, and then our kid goes to Eau Claire, and we will have a bus that comes to our house. And that's where, you know, we want our girls to go here. I got three girls, and one already goes to Putnam, and has been going there for four, three, four years already. So, so, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Elworthy?
Yes, so I would recommend the board acting on the separately, but I think you have the context of the, the board swap, if you will. And so this is an opportunity, as I know, and comments from the board are well-received today on prior, prior motions. Whenever possible, you know, we'll look to collaborate with other school districts, because we believe, you know, there are areas where you can clean up. It's, in the end, you know, it's, if we're, if our neighbors are successful, we're successful. So recommendation is to approve as submitted the Smith detachment attachment as stated.
Dr. Elworthy, with the administrative recommendation, I would hear a motion to approve the detachment of the Smith property from the Eau Claire area school district and attach said property to the Duran, Arkansas school district. Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to approve detachment of the Smith property? Dr. Vika? Commissioner Demant?
Nope.
Commissioners there? Dr. Farrar? Commissioners out? Dr. Johnson?
I'd just like to comment, I think, this situation, it worked out, but we also have to acknowledge from a previous speaker that this is also a disruption, as it, as it aligns with property lines and boundaries as well. And so in the case of coming forward, I think the disruption argument, even a swap, is a disruption, a disruption to our, our boundaries as they're set. Thank you.
Student reps? Right. A motion to approve the detachment of the Smith property. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Elworthy, I don't have here that we need to do a resolution. Is that the case? Oh, it's an and. I don't, you even highlighted it, and I didn't read it. This is, again, thank you for everyone's forbearance. Then this is what happens when you get someone who worked at the DPI writing your resolution path. Thank you. Motion to adopt, I would hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order to detach the Smith property from the Eau Claire area school district and attach said property to the Duran, Arkansas school.
Second.
You, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstention? You, that, that motion is also approved. Next, I would hear a motion to approve the detachment of the Purgat property from the Duran, Arkansas school district and attach said property to the Eau Claire area school district.
Erica? Erica? Jared? Erica and Jared.
Motion to approve the detachment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is approved. I would hear a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of an order to detach the Purgat property from the Duran, Arkansas school district and attach said property to the Eau Claire area school district.
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, Jared and Stephanie. This is the sign of a.
We look to add each other in.
I know.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Out and opposed? Any abstentions? I think we're clear over that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I would hear a motion to approve the public here, to.
Good God.
I approve it. I would hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing is hereby adjourned. At this time, we'll move on to our regular focus on results. Tonight, we have a presentation on middle school math, and I can see several of our team members coming forward. So I'll welcome you, Executive Director Van Vliet.
This is serious. That was just decided.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's focus on results presentation is on middle school math. Assisting me tonight is Michelle Radke, our Director of Secondary Programming and Post-Secondary Readiness. And we will be highlighting South Middle School tonight. So joining us tonight is Caleb Hunt, Principal, and Kristy Brower, Assistant Principal for South Middle School. Our desired outcomes for tonight is for you to understand the strengths and areas of growth for middle school math, and for you to learn about the continuous improvement efforts being taken to improve one of our key performance indicators, Forward Math Data. I, of course, will start out with our ECSD Equitable Multi-Level System of Support. As all of you know, our framework is a layered approach to meeting the needs of each student. We hope to be able to meet the needs of 80% of our students through universal instruction, and layered on additional supports and services to meet students' needs that need something more and different through Tier Two and Tier Three supports. Our vision for this framework is that each student experiences equity. And through that, we, by providing access, creating different opportunities for each student, we know and recognize that each of our students is on a different educational journey. So success looks different for each and every one of our students. So by having a layered approach to meeting the needs of each student, we're able to provide them with more and different opportunities for them to be successful. The way that we implement our framework is the really, is the work of our district that we've been engaging the last few years. By doing so, it is important for us, if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, is to provide equitable resources, practices, and services to each student, whether that's in the universal environment, Tier Two, or Tier Three supports. In 2021, the Teaching and Learning, Student Services, and Special Education Department, we developed a strategic plan to move forward to build sustainable systems across our school district to ensure long-term success and resilience for our students. We have been intentionally creating interconnections between, between different parts of our systems so that we can ensure that they work efficiently together. Tonight, you'll have an opportunity to see how these systems are coming together to support our staff and students, and for us to change student outcomes. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Michelle Radke, our Director of Secondary Programming and Post-Secondary Readiness, to share the data with you.
Thank you. Tonight, middle school Forward Math Data will be detailed to provide an understanding of the current situation for math at middle, at the middle level. This data will help set the context for why teaching and learning is focusing on using the ECSD instructional framework as the guide for continuous improvement through our district. The instructional framework includes the following systems: a guaranteed and viable curriculum, instructional delivery, and professional learning. All three of these systems, when aligned and coordinated, provide the environment to improve student outcomes in math at the middle level. In our presentation tonight, we are highlighting one of our three middle schools, as Mandy stated, South Middle School. While this is the focus of our detailed analysis, it is important to note that all three of our middle schools are implementing similar action steps to improve student outcomes. By showcasing this particular school's journey, we aim to provide a representative example of the initiatives and efforts being undertaken across the district. Both South Middle School, displayed in the red bar, and ECSD Middle Schools, displayed by the blue bar, will be compared to state data, which is displayed by the gray bar. As communicated and previous focused on results, the state of Wisconsin recalibrated the Forward Exam scores for 2024 due to recent revisions in the Wisconsin academic standards in mathematics. Due to the state's recalibration of the Forward Exam benchmarks, we are unable to compare the percentage of students meeting the benchmark with previous years. Instead, we are focusing on comparing the data with the state by examining the gap between our district and the state. A black line is present on all graphs between the 2223 and 2324 bars to acknowledge the change in state benchmarks. Each slide will show the percentage of students meeting the benchmark on the top of the slide, as well as a table on the bottom, displaying the gap percentage between our district and our school compared to the state. When looking at the key performance indicator of the Forward Exam, the district's middle school data, along with South Middle School data as a whole, is on an upward trajectory, demonstrating improvements over time. As a result, the gap between the district and the state average has widened in our favor, with our district's performance now exceeding the state average. This positive trend for both the district and South Middle School is a testament to the district's ongoing efforts and dedicated, dedication to improving student outcomes. In the next slides, we will disaggregate the data for ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School by grade, students with disabilities, English learners, economic status, and race. The exception is for schools to disag, the expectation is for schools to disaggregate data to help each school identify strengths and areas of growth, which are used with other data sets to develop their school improvement plans. Next, we will take an overall, overall data and disaggregate that data by grade to identify the strengths and areas of growth for our middle school math curriculum. To start, we present a comparison of our Grade Six Math Forward Exam results for the district shown in blue, along with middle school, which is shown in red, against the state averages, which are shown in gray, over the four academic years. The bar chart on the top illustrates the percentage of students who met the benchmarks each year. Notably, both the district and South Middle School have consistently outperformed the state average in Grade Six for the past two years, as you can see in the table on the bottom of the slide. Next, Grade Seven Forward Math results are presented. Similar to Grade Six, both the district and South Middle School consistently surpassed the state percentages. In 2324 academic year, South Middle School exhibited the largest disparity in Grade Seven Math Exam, Forward Exam results compared to the state percentage. Finally, Grade Eight Forward Math Exam results show an increased gap compared to the state average for all ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School over the course of the past two years. The gap between the middle schools and the state percentages has widened, highlighting the intentional action steps for secondary. Next, we will disaggregate the data by students with disabilities and English learners to ensure all student groups are being served by our universal instruction fairly and to promote equity. By reviewing this data and identifying strengths and areas of growth, we are able to hold ourselves accountable for the performance of each student and not just to the average. While the state percentage shows a general upward trend for students with disabilities, ECSD Middle School have experienced some challenges with a declining trend in proficiency percentages. The gap between the district and the state is widening negatively, with the state having a higher percentage of students meeting the benchmark over time. This is an area of growth, and in later slides, we will discuss the action steps the district is taking to positively change the outcomes in math for students with disabilities. Reviewing the comparison data to the state, the performance trends for students who are English learners have been steadily improving over time at both ECSD, for all ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School. Overall, ECSD Middle School students who are English learners show significant improvement over the years, and has performed above the state for the last two years. Next, we will disaggregate data by students who are economically disadvantaged to help understand if additional supports and resource allocations are needed in the area of math. The data on this slide highlights the strength of ECSD Middle Schools. It indicates a positive trajectory for ECSD Middle School students who are economically disadvantaged. The trend for South Middle Schools shows fluctuations and variability over the years in the performance of students who are economically disadvantaged, but they continue to be above the state for all four years, which mimics the district. Next, we will disaggregate the data by race to ensure all student groups are being served by our universal instruction fairly and promote equity, by reviewing this data and identifying strengths and areas of growth. The first category we will review is students who are Asian. The trends of students who are Asian indicate variability over the years. The gap for both ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School has fluctuated over time. The ECSD Middle School for students who are Asian consistently remain below the state percentages, while South Middle School consistently remains above the state percentages. This has been identified as an area of growth for the district as a whole. Reviewing the comparison data for the state, the trends of students who are Black is increasing over time for both ECSD Middle Schools and for South Middle School. For the past four years, both ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School consistently are greater than the state percentages. ECSD Middle School is generally, in general, has exhibited the largest positive disparity for students who are Black for the 2324 results compared to the state percentages. As we continue to demonstrate gains with the demographic, with this demographic group, and continue to perform above the state, we have identified this as a success for our middle schools, but it still needs to be, continue to be a focus for us. Reviewing the comparison data to the state, the performance trends for students who are Hispanic have been steadily improving over time at both ECSD Middle School, at both the ECSD Middle Schools and South Middle School. Reviewing the comparison data to the state, the trends of students who are two or more for the ECSD Middle Schools in general consistently outperforms the state percentages. When looking at comparisons. When looking at comparisons to the state and the percentage of students meeting benchmark, this has been identified also as a strength for the district. Overall, the eight... The data indicates on this slide variability in the performance of students who are white over the years for ECSD Middle Schools in general. Over the past four years, ECSD Middle Schools have consistently performed below the state percentages on the math forward exam. This group is our greatest population and is our comparison group, which is performing below the state. This has been identified as an area of growth for our district and has helped us identify a root cause as our universal or Tier One supports needing attention. Even though we are above the state for students who are economically disadvantaged, it continues to be an area for the district has identified as an area of growth due to the gaps we are experiencing when looking at the demographic cross-sections. We have identified that students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds continue to face barriers to success within our school systems and consistently underperform comparison to their peers. As you will see in the next slides, the gaps highlight the need for targeted interventions and supports through our Tier Two and Tier Three systems, as Mandy addressed on our EMLSS. Addressing these disparities is essential to ensure that all students have the access and opportunities to success, to succeed regardless of their socioeconomic status. Despite the progress made in other areas, Tier Three systems are the least developed, highlighting a gap in our support structure. The data on our next slide underscores the importance of prioritizing the development and implementation of these intensive support systems to ensure each student receives the necessary resources and interventions to have the opportunity to succeed. When looking at students in Grade Six, Seven, and Eight that are economically disadvantaged, there is a 30.2% gap in the 2324 school year between those students that are not economically disadvantaged, which is the thick gray line, and students who are economically disadvantaged, which is the blue line. There is a 6.3% gap in students with disabilities in the last year, a 21.9% gap in English learners from not economic to economically disadvantaged, a 20.1% gap in students who are Asian, a 55.5% gap in students who are Black. This is our largest gap we see when looking at socioeconomic status. A 17.5% gap in students who are Hispanic, a 40.5% gap for students who are two or more, and a 28.1% gap for students who are white. These gaps help us identify the supports and services needed for each student to have success in our district. Now that we have examined the trends in our district's key performance indicator on the forward exam, we will explore the ECSD instructional framework and the design to address the areas of growth and supports for each learner. This framework has been used as a guide for the Teaching and Learning Department to make changes in our secondary math program with the goal of improving student outcomes. As many of you know, during the summer 2022, the Teaching and Learning Department, along with Student Services and Special Education, facilitated a process with a representative group of ECSD educators to develop an instructional framework. This agreed-upon instructional framework provides a structure and guidance for delivering high-quality instruction and professional learning to enact a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We believe when we have all of these systems, guaranteed and viable curriculum, instructional delivery, and professional learning, when they are aligned and coordinated, we can provide the access and opportunity for each learner to learn at a high level. Over the next slides, I will summarize the commitment of time and resources that we have allocated to the content area of math. The first system of the instructional framework is creating a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This will provide students the opportunity to learn the same content, no matter who teaches a course, and teachers will have the adequate time to teach what is intended. To summarize the action steps the district is taking to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum in math at the secondary level, in 2020... In 2324, the focus was on selecting Grade Six through 12 essential standards to create vertical alignment. In the current school year, we have teams of teachers coming together with district facilitation to develop proficiency skills, unit plans, creating essential questions and learning targets, aligning our assessments, and ensuring assessments measure the depth of the knowledge in the learning targets. And finally, in 2526, the teachers will be expected to implement the intended curriculum. Professional learning is another part of our instructional framework system. We believe by having the intentional focus on professional learning, it will support the implementation of our guaranteed and viable curriculum. CPM is our resource we use to support our curriculum. We have invested in all of our new math teachers by expecting them to go through a week training before school starts on how to use CPM to support our current curriculum. This training is then followed up with two more days throughout the school year, and the training focuses on new teachers aiming to adjust their instructional practices, expand their content knowledge, and create a positive, student-centered classroom. Each of our middle schools has a math instructional coach, and these coaches have the opportunity to engage in professional learning last summer through CPM. The objectives of this training included: develop listening, thinking, and responding skills, considering the impact of relationships with teachers, using tools for continuous teacher growth, utilizing resources for student-centered math classes, and improving learning opportunities by focusing on student-centered goals. Last, professional development that we have invested in is for all of our math teachers, and this is building on discourse. It is a professional opportunity which all secondary math teachers are attending during their PLIP days this year. This professional learning sessions focus on enhancing skills and facilitating meaningful mathematical discourse and adjusting instructional practices to create equitable, student-centered classrooms. Instructional delivery is the third system of the instructional framework. Effective instructional strategies and practices generate certain mental states and processes in learners' mind, which in turn enhance student learning. The district has adapted the model of instruction, the new art and science of teaching, to help teachers intentionally design their instruction and help them make informed decisions about how to best support student learning. Through this model of instruction, in every lesson, teachers should be providing students with feedback, which refers to the information loop between the teacher and students that provides students with an awareness of what they should be learning and how they are doing. It should also provide students with content which allows students to move from an initial understanding of content to application of content while reviewing and upgrading their knowledge. They also should use context, which meets students' psychological needs, which include engagement, order, a sense of belonging, and have high expectations for all students. The district has invested in math coaches in each of our middle schools, building our focus on continuous teacher growth for all of our math teachers. We have also invested in math interventionists to provide supports that are in addition to the student's universal instruction. The goal of the Tier Two support is to close gaps by implementing a diagnostic assessment to understand the skill gaps of each student and understand the supports that each student needs to be successful. Lastly, to support our Tier Two system... Tier Three systems at a district level, during the 2425 school year, the Special Education Department is focusing on instructional delivery and professional learning for special education teachers. This year, they have been focusing on specially-designed instruction during the PLIP days, IEP paperwork compliance, and they continue to collaborate as a special education leadership team. This year, they are focusing on a continuum of supports, increasing access to the universal environment for students with disabilities, and gaining a deeper understanding of the math essential standards and focusing in on comprehensive evaluations. Next, Caleb Hunt and Kristi Brower are going to speak on how they are using the instructional framework as their guide to improve student outcomes in math at South Middle School.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thanks, Michelle LeCoq. Good icebreaker. This is our school-wide improvement goal, so a lot of conversation around alignment and coordination with district goals, our SIP plan. We are a sales school, so this is also our sale goal. A lot of what we do is embedded within this goal. We've identified the school report card value-added score, so a lot of the subgroups will fall under that 3.0. So our goal is to get them at 3.0 or better. All of our staff this year were tasked with knowing this is our school goal. We had 100%, close to it, 98% of our staff that could identify this as our school goal. Universal planning, so a lot of conversation. When I came to South Middle School and Kristi came, we had a lot of work to do. We felt like there were some things that we could do differently. We understand that the district is looking at alignment, coordination. So we've adopted a lot of the things that you just heard about, and we focus on five pillars in our school. We want to work together to engage kids. We want to ask better questions. So we want to have more teaching and also more learning in more classrooms more of the time. Those five pillars, we have shared leadership. We use the art and science of teaching. We are still implementing Avid and PBIS structures. We put in Building Thinking classrooms, which is a math focus, but we've done that with all of our teachers. Then we do something called a walk-through triad, where our teachers are observing one another. We have three cycles where they get to see three other teachers, and they observe them on their prep time. And then they meet and they talk about what they've learned, what they liked. So that's our universal kind of plan and how we attack that. To deep dive into that, this is maybe a little harder for you to see, but we want to share our leadership across our building, so it's not just Caleb's building. It's not Caleb and Kristi's building. It's not just an admin building. We have a lot of people who can support our teachers. Our teachers have to have kids five hours a day, 30 kids in a classroom. That's a lot. So anyone who's not tied to that day and has flexibility within their day, we want to utilize them. So that would be, you know, this year we have ATOSA. We have behavior interventionists. We have school counselors. We have school social workers, special education department chairs. Anyone that can be flexible. We look to have them be flexible within our staff to help support kids in a number of ways. That would be our shared leadership model. We have focused on student engagement within the art and science of teaching. Most closely, this year, we are looking at chained responses, a way to increase adult practices and get them to be identifying what questions they're asking kids and how many questions they're asking kids in a row. That is building into the Building Thinking Classroom model, which is about depth of knowledge. So those questions you're asking, how deep are you going? We identified very quickly that we wanted to get deeper with our question sets. Sometimes I think it's easy to scratch the surface, but we want people to get deeper. So we use that model, and we have all staff learning the different CPM strategies within Building Thinking classrooms. Our Avid and PBIS teams are focusing on routine and structure. So no matter if a kid is in reading, or they're in math, or they're in an intervention, or they're in FIED, they have a first five and a last five routine built in that we have up on the board displayed. So we want our kids to have structure and predictability. So we have ongoing PL and professional learning around that. And then finally, I kind of spoke a little bit about the observation triads, where we have teachers observing one another, guided by our coaches, ourselves, and we're just kind of monitoring what they're looking for, collaboration, and all of that. So that's kind of the closer look in our universal supports. And then as far as the math-specific areas, Kristi's just going to finish up with that.
And I'm going to try and not get really nerdy when I talk about this, like math is my favorite thing to talk about. And so the work that our math department is doing this year, we really started last spring, and we came together as a department, and we looked at the eight mathematical practices from NCTM, the National Council of Teachers for Mathematics. And we decided, like, if we were going to be aligned and coordinated with the district with what we knew our school improvement plan was going to be with sale, the thing that was the most natural was to focus on posing purposeful questions. So to make that shift from, can you give me an answer right now? Or can I ask you a question? Where you're going to deepen your conceptual understanding, and you're going to start to build off of like the little nugget, you know, and make it expand. And so we collected baseline data last spring to look at, okay, like, what's our current state and where do we want to go? We looked at that again in the fall, and we decided, like, based on where each teacher was, like, what their goal was going to be. And then Beth Dooman, who is our coach, she's excellent. She meets with our teachers quarterly after she collects data. She meets with them. They collaborate towards a week. And she's just constantly there, giving them feedback on their instruction and helping propel them forward. We have a tool that we use that's based off of the CPM coaching workshop I went to with Beth Dooman, who's our coach, and also Kaiza Mooney, who is our instructional coach for TEG. And we collect data on our teachers. What's that leading data from kids? Because we have this vision of what we hope kids will do in a math classroom. But if we're going to achieve that, we need to look at our practices as adults and determine what we need to shift. And then, I'll give everything on that.
Thank you. So just to wrap up at the end here, you have heard some really concrete examples of what they're doing directly in the classroom to create changes in student outcomes. You know, our focus in teaching and learning has been creating systems to change student outcomes. And I just want to reiterate that again tonight. Our goal is to make a change in student outcomes, and it has been all of these systems coming together. We know that we need to make improvements in our universal instruction. We have added our program reviews and implemented a process to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We've added coaches to help our adults approve their practice in the classroom. We support our collaborative practices as a way of professional learning for our staff. We have a focus this year on our principals, as well as our coaches, conducting observation and providing teachers feedback on how they're doing. We also have increased our system for creating a strong professional learning plan, which has allowed us to provide a lot of the professional development and training that Michelle Reiki spoke of. The importance of creating Tier Two and Tier Three systems. Sometimes it's been, in the years previous, we did not have the resources to allocate to our buildings for the people, whether that's our interventionist, our people services team, has increased significantly so that we can create these systems. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done in our district to create all of these systems coming together, the key piece of these systems working together. And if we were to pull one of these out, the system is not going to be as strong. So some of the data you saw tonight might not be exactly where we want it, but we do see it's trending in a positive direction. And what we need to happen now is just continuation of this work without one of these systems falling apart. So I can't speak to the work that everybody has been doing to make these changes, whether it's at South but across all three middle schools. And I hope that we have the resources to continue this work. So with that, we'll open up to questions.
First, I want to acknowledge the intentional and professional work that you're doing at South and across the district to do that. Like, it's hard work and it's necessary. And I just wanted to start by saying thank you for that. And it's clear that you're taking on this work while still doing the best you can every day for kids. Thanks for that. For comments and questions, first we'll go to Dr. Bika.
Thank you for the excellent report. And I just wanted to say, express appreciation for the data presentation that you recognized socioeconomic status as consistently one of the most important predictors of academic difficulty and that you looked at some intersectional relationships there with the other variables. That, of course, was the first thing I noticed. Thanks.
Sure, Devens? I... Director Vanplee, we've talked before about the complications of quantifying information about students with disabilities. And I just wanted to... I guess I don't have any solutions, but I was wondering if you could expand on how we're going to use this data with students with disabilities to help inform our systems, considering the variability of that population across time.
Each of our schools need to look closely at their data and how they're doing with their students with disabilities, and then develop an action plan and really conduct a root cause analysis of what is or is not happening within that school to help make those improvements. Our Special Education Department is putting some district-wide supports in place to help support our special educators and improving their practice, also creating a strong written plan, an IEP, that supports the work that needs to happen. Our Special Education Department has processes in place to support that improvement. And I'm looking over at Dana, our Director of Special Education. Would you mention anything else?
Yes, just building off of that is that is exactly the approach we are taking this year and really have put five work groups in place that is really targeting some of exactly what we have talked about already today. And each of those work groups are putting action plans to... And each of those uh work groups are putting action plans together to continue moving that work forward. Um, and not only at a district level, but then also down into individual building levels as well.
Thank you. Sure.
Um, so I don't have really an official question, surprise, surprise. Um, but what I want to say is um I'm I'm tremendously struck by the level of like you guys are incredible professionals and you're doing such incredible work for kids. And this presentation is just, it just shows how much thought and effort and time um is going into not only your development as leaders, but the development of your staff as as people who work with our kids. Um, anecdotally, I have a kid at South Middle School. And um I just, it's funny that this is the presentation that was up here because two weeks ago he was sitting at the table doing math and I was blown away by his growth in his confidence in math from the start of the year till now. So that's just an anecdotal thing. Um, and I have a daughter with a brand new math teacher at Memorial. So Dave, this one's for you. Um, and her comments in in recent uh weeks about his growth as a teacher and his confidence as a teacher um has been uh just just great. So it's anecdotal data for you, but I can tell you that it um it has been uh noticeable in our house. And I guess, you know, we're we're going to monitor tonight, community engagement. And you know, I think what Dr. Bika pointed out with um what this, what these slides showed me was we will close the gap for our students in multiple demographic groups when we address what is happening with our kids who have the least. Um, and that is not a school only problem. That is a community problem. That is a state problem. That is a nationwide problem. And um I would love to see our district demonstrating what we are doing. And and I think I think we're doing it. I just think it, you know, just to articulate it more, what what are those partnerships that we're building within our communities to help those kids? And and how are schools at the core of that? Um, and and what 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 advocacy can we be doing um as such a crucial part of that for kids? Um, and and trying to build more support for our families. Because you you guys can't do that alone. We need to do that as as a community. So I just wanted to thank you guys for a tremendous presentation and for the work.
Yeah, yep.
What'd I get add with that? So it's year two for our social workers in our building. Um, Christie's second year running our attendance protocols. Um, we have year two with a social emotional learning interventionist. And those resources are being utilized. And I'm going to sound, I don't have the data right now, but they're being utilized really well at South Middle School. We feel really confident that those numbers are going to get, you know, tighter. It's just, it's a lot of work. It's a big lift. There's community partnerships involved. All of that stuff has to come to play, but um we need to kind of see it through. Uh, right now, it's just really early in the game for that and some of those changes. But I feel like our adults at South collectively understand that's an issue. And how can they help every single kid, not just, you know, um, the few that are doing really well? And, you know, we talked about math tonight, but there's multiple teachers at South that are identifying these areas. Their SLOs PPG are aligned to a a value added subgroup. So it's just going to take a little time, in my opinion.
For.
Hey, um, I have to say, I think this is the best focus on results presentation I've ever seen. Um, I'm really impressed with the 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 way that we had such a great integration between um data that was, you know, articulated in intersectional ways and broken out and connecting that so directly to um the behaviors and and plans within our buildings, the professional learning steps. Um, for me, it really connected all the parts and a sense of the vertical alignment between the district down to a building, down to teachers, down to staff, down to students. Um, so I I just want to congratulate um everyone here on on this presentation and all the work that went into it, which is is really the work of years. Um, you know, it's not the work of, you know, weeks of of making a presentation, but it's the work of years of um making these system level changes and implementation on so many different moving parts at once. So thank you. Uh, this was, I I think just something that I hope our our future, you know, results presentations strive to model on and especially that connection between, you know, what does this data show? Where do we want to go? Where have we been? But also so clearly what what we're doing and what we will be doing. So, thank you.
Yep.
Michelle, it's out.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you as well as they have um already said, but I I really appreciate the um the data that you shared and how it was uh digested so we can see by race and um economic status. And I think this really won't show, especially if we're going to be looking at um and improving um student outcomes and results. I really appreciate all that detail. And I can't tell you how much I love this map right here, uh this chart right here. I think it's uh really neat that like we all, you know, we're returning students, right? Uh, it's something that uh was mentioned earlier about root causes of um student outcomes and the gaps that we're seeing. I I do have a question around that, like, right? As as staff who, as administrator who is working in the district, what are the root causes that you all see from buildings, right? And how are those root causes um being a part of this like change system that you created?
I think part of the school improvement process that each of our schools engage in during the spring and summer time to plan for the upcoming year and what their action steps are going to be. That's one of the ways that each of our buildings go through that process and doing a root cause analysis at the district level. We've conducted root cause analysis. For example, Michelle Reiki spoke to one of them. We know uh because we are not meeting eighty percent of our students um needs within universal instruction, that is one of our root cause analysis. Through our root cause analysis, we identified that we need to improve universal instruction. Uh, so we do that at the district level and then we also do that at the school level. Um, Caleb, would you add anything specifically for South or Michelle, anything else? Did I capture it?
I I would just say that um each of our schools has different different personalities. They have different makeups. Um, and that is why it is so important for us not to just do a root cause analysis at the district level, but our schools also to do that because they may um determine a different root cause based on the makeup of the students within their schools. Um, and the outcomes that they're seeing, the teachers, the, you know, the practices that they have have been putting in place. Um, so I think we have district trends, but we also have school trends.
Did that answer your question? Thanks.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I uh I guess I'll be someone of the the downer of the group. Great presentation. Um, uh, nice job on the improvements. I uh, as we are aware, uh, Wisconsin actually made uh made the news again. They have the largest gap uh reading math, especially actually between black and white students. I I I applaud the percentage increases. However, when we when we when we look at that percentage comparative to every group with besides actually students with disabilities, can barely break in twenty percent in that achievement gap comparative to. So we talked about you highlighted intersectionality between uh between economics and uh our African American students. I I I really, I I really think this district, we we internally have to look at actually biases that actually exist, actually teaching actually uh uh African American kids, kids of color, especially actually like black males. I I looked at the the uh the report card, district report card. Black kids are the only number, oh, it says on here a hundred and forty five that's attainable besides actually American Indian. So this small number of students, smallest number of students has the lowest percentage of actually success across different variables. And so as we continue to try to tackle these particular issues and see increases, we applaud actually improvements, but we really have to do a little bit more, I I I think digging and and understand why why this is, it's it's actually systemic. And and it's it's really, I I I'm troubled by it and I know uh there are other individuals or or on on this committee that will look at the percentages and and be just fine, but that that that's it's really, it it it's really not good. And what I wanted to know though, could you ex, could you tell me a little bit more? Where are we? Are we part of this uh this AGR program? Is our district part of AGR or or not? And I I'm just curious, which one of the those three components do we we highlight in our in our use of the the one to one tutoring? I think the instructional coaching we do, I mean, we can't, we can't do the, we can't do the ratio. Uh, I I know the ratio percentages are actually like too low for us, but are we, are we a part of that? And which one do we kind of like implement throughout?
Do engage in that program, but that is a program that serves K through third grade.
K through three, it's all right. It's true, yes.
Yes.
All right, and then could you, anything that's, anything that's done at South? When you, when you do at a at a district, could could some of those positives, can they be scaled up? What is, what does the scaling up process of as you're identifying things that work at buildings, work at grade level, work with a group of teachers at one particular school? Are 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 we looking into like what potentially can be like scaled up and shared out?
I think the collaborative practices that we have in place, not only for administrators, but also when we bring teacher groups together, they're able to share, you know, the positive things and positive changes that they're making in the classroom as well as when our coaches come together and talk about the things that they're coaching their teachers on and then the improvements that uh they make. So collaboration is one of the things that we're working on. Do we need to make a continuous improvement to address some of the things that you were talking about? Absolutely. Uh, we have a long ways to go, but I feel like we are finally on on the right track um to do so. I think an important piece on, you know, especially in math, when when you don't have a guaranteed and viable curriculum in place, that's really hard uh for teachers to be able to collaborate around instructional practices that they're seeing positive outcomes from. So as we work to implement that GVC, especially, you know, particularly in math, it allows that opportunity for teachers and administrators to to share those successes. And we hope to build on a system and how do we do that ongoing? Because that is a big piece of professional learning is collaboration for our our teachers.
Did you think also of the the middle school principals since I've been here? We've just committed to with the changeover at South and the changeover at North Star and Michelle being, you know, um, the kind of consistency piece there, we decided that we need to be aligned and coordinated um as middle schools. So an experience that someone, a family would have at DeLong, it's similar, the same thing at South. And North Star is best we can, knowing that North Star is just a little smaller. But um every PL afternoon, um if our teachers are doing some professional learning at the curriculum writing level, we're often meeting with our APs all as one big group. We do, we do that uh each year to kind of make sure that if we're suspending kids, uh that we're not over suspending um at one school versus the other, that there's alignment with things like discipline. Um, anything that's working well for a school. So um the triad piece that we brought to the table where we have peers observing one another, um, you'll know that you go to DeLong, um, they're trying it, North Star is going to be trying it. So we're having those adult practices kind of shared too. And there's a lot of successes that they've helped us with, with scheduling our kids and making sure that we're um looking at our master grid the right way so that we're um being creative with opportunities for kids. So we're not siloing, um, you know, band and orchestra at the same or orchestra and French at the same time. So we can make sure that those are differences. So there's been a lot of support among the middle school principals to help each other out. Um, and I think that's one effort that um has been successful. Um, for me as a new principal in the district and just in general for um the middle school principals.
And then one, just one last thing, did uh the the math, the the math assessment scores for those students with disabilities, those are the only ones that actually don't require accommodation or not, like alternative assessment then? Is that just, is that the that group?
I think those scores that you are seeing tonight include the DLM, which is uh for the students that um.
Alternative. Thank you. Yep.
Reps?
Um, I have a brother in sixth grade and I have seen him grow confidence through his middle school. And I strongly feel that success in the early years, such as middle school, possibly correlates effort and confidence in high school. Being in a high schooler myself, I've seen kids struggle with math and try to give up and just say they can't. So I think improving these scores at an earlier level will create more success in high school. So I wanted to thank you for what you're doing regarding these scores.
Ben Johnson?
As a former English teacher, I think what I'd like to share with a grain of salt, because when I struggled with math in school, I just doubled it and add thirty and you just, it just, that's the answer I put on the paper. Um, five years ago, before I had started, actually, when I was learning a little bit about the district, I I looked at the data. Um, spoke with Dr. Heartbeck and I was very concerned with the achievement, not just in math, but but at the middle level. And to see when each one of these folks, um, you know, in the past, it was principal call up. I think we started to see at South, we started to see that growth. And I'm I'm really proud of each one of these folks as well as the staff members, the middle school teams in 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 general. Um, one thing about South is they've had a tremendous amount of turnover in their math staff over the past five years. But it's that collaboration piece. And like Nadia had mentioned before, you take out any one or even two of those with the systems, the whole thing crumbles. Um, things like sale, you know, principal Kohler, um, you know, at North, uh, we've got other schools involved in, I believe, Locust Lane as well. You know, that's just that added support, but we're not, you know, we're not taking our foot off the gas. We're continuing that. But I've seen that on Tuesdays and Thursdays when the newer math teachers would work collaboratively with, you know, that middle school piece. And that that's really, really important. And how excited the team was when this data kind of came through, not just the December sixteenth data, but this in particular, to really break it down by the the uh subgroups. That's what they were most proud of. But looking back twenty twenty one and even before and that growth, yep, the cut scores got changed. But looking how we are relative to the state and in a larger district like Oakley, it's not always that easy. Um, but really I commend each of these folks as well as people who have worked at South in the past in our middle schools. Um, again, we got to celebrate that publicly. Thank you.
Not as close by uh saying that, uh, you know, I think obviously the gaps, first of all, I think we need to acknowledge that this district has really come a long ways in being able to acknowledge the places where we're not serving students where we need to be. You know, there was, there's plenty of districts and that, and you know, sometimes probably even here in the past where we would not have even been acknowledging the massive gap that we have between our black and white students or all of those students. But, you know, direct reference and and show us those gaps and and be fearless to acknowledge we're not where we want to be is important. Um, I remain much more interested in growth scores and, you know, the three point O, you know, than I am in the the bottom line because growth scores are how we're going to, you know, growth is how we close those gaps. And as as our board, you know, considers, especially, you know, currently, like, how do we continue? Like, our board and our community are unchanged, our commitment to equity for students, right? I mean, how many times did you say we want to put the resources that each student needs into their hands? Like, our board continues to be focused on that and this community continues to be focused on that. And that's how we're going to get there. So I guess I just want to challenge you as you go forward to be bold in working for equitable distribution of those resources. Make the, how do we, how do we acknowledge the the real systemic bias? Dr. Johnson, you're not wrong, right? I mean, that's equity statement acknowledges. And as we think about now, how do we reaffirm and evolve that to be even stronger to push forward? Just continue to be bold. Take the swing fearlessly because when we address the needs of those students, when we, all boats will rise. So just really thank you for the professionalism and that focus and the fearlessness to address it. Long ways to go and I know we'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Dean, were you about to quote story trick?
I don't think so, but there's, I guess there's a problem and I'll thank you to not speak unless recognized by the chair.
Thank you for a little levity. Uh, we'll now move on to monitoring of district results uh and district operations. We need to change that header. Uh, tonight we have OE seven, community engagement. I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Johnson, before we go to comments and questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go through this uh pretty quickly. First off, for seven point one, uh, we had all indicators in compliance, uh, but one uh from a communications aspect, uh, Director Ying is with us in in the back. From a communications aspect, Director Ying is with us in, in the back here this, this evening with the Family Climate Survey. We established that baseline data in twenty twenty-three, if, if you remember. The only reason why that's in compliance with exception is there is one that, that is not. But Dane and I are very proud and pleased to, to note that the survey data, you know, met all the, all the improvements, all the goals. And the board wanted it kind of color coded from previous, the, the previous years. And, and again, we prioritize those select questions to the respondents. And indicator six is fully in compliance. However, indicator number five, Dane and I talked about this a little bit as well, where we weren't compliances, and I don't know if it's survey overload, could possibly be. We had done some extra, extra work on advertising that for the climate survey. You know, it's close to 10% of our, our families, but again, that was where we had fallen short. So going to the next one with seven two, full compliance with protecting confidential information. Two items or two, two situations in the past year, those were addressed, confirmed by Char. Handling parent community requests, fully compliant in seven three, the Eau Claire's voice evidence, of which I received one today and it was about the weather. But anyway, those are very similar to the year prior. I think it was one seventy-three and one seventy-one. We pass those on. If it's related to a school, the, the principal gets those submissions as well. Terry's fantastic at alerting me to those. For seven point four, the timely flow of the information, you know, listing some of the, I didn't want to have an exhaustive list of the evidence, but really just showing a, with those indicators, with one and with two, indicators, one and two with, with dialogue and maintaining the collaborative partnerships. If we go to OE seven five. And I think that's part and parcel due to the referendum. You know, we didn't put the link to the referendum presentations of, you know, sixty-plus subgroups. But the interesting thing was, you know, between the three of us, Dr. Elworthy, Manny Van Vliet and I, it was great to meet some different folks, some new folks where that gave us a, a little bit of an opportunity to then join some other groups that we typically haven't been meeting with, or we've recently learned about to kind of spread our wings a little bit. So looking forward to that in both seven four and with seven five. If we move down to seven six, personal presence at events and activities as well. For the most part me, but you know, possibly and quite often other, other groups, other executive directors or directors. But for the most part, again, these are all types of things I've tried to invite others. For example, with the Chamber of Commerce, the eggs and issues, we've had more attendance from the district at those. CBTC, the Wisconsin Public Ed Network. You know, again, and, and just some of the basics that even in the summertime, community tours that we have, we have alumni that come in that want to be, that are very generous with their alumni group, they've got a donation. That, that homecoming parade is all, always just a blast, whether it's a referendum year or not. But again, the referendum, you know, sixty-plus opportunities for us to, to, to meet with other, other groups. It really allowed us to make some different, some different connections where we maybe haven't before in the past. And then seven seven, in compliance, yet the last indicator. You know, we did a standalone, I, I spoke with Terry Piper Thompson about it. We've reviewed some of the, like a standalone full district annual report. We put links up on its own separate page under school board. But we do what we would like to do and what we will do, and this is a perfect summer project. That's what we've looked at some other districts. It's usually posted in the summer. All the data, and it would be data from probably twenty-three, twenty-four, not this year's data yet. But you know, like Appleton has about a thirty-page annual report with a variety of things on it. Many of the things that we already post with our OE, our OEs, but especially our Rs. Appleton's is, is kind of the one that I, I spoke with Terry, could we do some over spring break? But it would probably make most sense to then place that report as a report instead of links this summer. And that would be a, a great, great project and something we could just kind of continue. So we're also switching web platforms next month and Terry has reached out to others. Before we do anything really big, let's make sure we do that flip. And then we can start posting a, a bit more, posting some different things, because otherwise it's just kind of making things, I think, a bit confusing, whether it's for the public or for us internally. So just wanted to share that with all of you with OE seven. Again, you know, the referendum was really helpful, but it also allowed us to make some different connections and looking forward to that for the future.
Superintendent Johnson, comments and questions, Dr. Bika?
I have three questions. The first one on page six, it's OE seven point one, indicator five. Taking purposes that is. I suppose this would be it, something that I would have been looking for in the report. So participation in parent surveys increases from year to year. I wonder how much is expected and what do we consider a significant difference? The other omission for me is we want not only higher response rates, but also more representative samples in terms of the race, class of our parents, English language learner students, students receiving special education services and so on. My next question on page eight, OE seven two.
Dr. Bika, could you go back to that last point you just made on seven five?
Just the idea of not only higher response rates, but also making sure we're getting responses from the different groups. In seven point two, there are two indicators, page eight. So I wondered why would we consider merging the current indicator one and indicator two? And then in the evidence, you declare any breaches and then right, move right toward the resolution of those breaches. And my other question is, would it be appropriate to add an indicator here for non-staff breachers? Breach, yeah, breachers, breaches, britches, like external entities. Last question, page ten. Seven point five. The only indicator here. Indicator one, the only evidence here is dependent on board behavior. So I wondered if we needed to switch to a district control activity for this evidence.
Given Commissioner Demant a minute to finish writing notes before I bring the floor.
Thank you, Dean. Still pointing to Johnson for, it's great that you go into all these different community organizations, but I do notice that they are a lot that are indirectly connected to education. And I think that in order to reach more of our population, it might be worthwhile investigating ways to go to other sorts of community events in order to be with more different kinds of folks just to get a better understanding of our community as a whole. So that's, that's just a suggestion I've got.
Commissioner Reserve?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take a, a much higher look at it than I think Dr. Bika did. But just a, a couple of things, seven point four, so that's page nine, Terry, for you. I just wanted to highlight this as a strength for us this year. I think that you've really come in to your own, Mike, in the communication with families in the district. Related, it, it is, it is incredibly timely. It's clear, it's concise, you're very good at communicating with us. It's, it's just been something that I've watched you grow into and your team grow into kind of your style of leading that. And I think it's been really, it's been really positive in my many years in the district to see the growth in that. So I just wanted to, to say that that really is a strength there. So yes, you're in compliance, but I think you're in compliance quite well. Another one that I thought was a strength for us this year was seven point six. And obviously I think that is directly related to the referendum work. And I think we talked about that a little bit in our board debrief about how impactful that was for us as a district, the feeling of us all together as a district out in the community, listening and talking. And I think your kind of continued just, yes, we're going to go out, we're going to have a conversation, but you also just show up. You know, we've, we get pictures of you doing random things, we see you on TV or in, you know, parades. I think it's been, it, it really does help give you kind of that center point of, of our district and encouraging our staff members to get out there as well and, and support. The school district and public has been just, it's been great this year. So where do you go? I'm gonna just look at seven point five for a minute, because I also felt this one, and maybe Dr. Bika not quite did the specifics that you did with looking at, you know, an indicator being board dependent. But this felt maybe outside of the referendum, this feels weak to me. And, and particularly, and I think maybe some of this, when we talk about key communicators and the kind of the new idea about key communicators and how you're going to be hopefully kind of helping that, because you know, really we want you here, helping our staff, helping our kids as much as possible. And so this is a, this is a tricky one. But I'm going to use, I'm just going to use an example. So one of the things that, we had a presentation here by the Eco Club at Memorial related to OE three. And I think Dr. Bika specifically asked about can we make that commitment? And, you know, we, we never received follow-up, like did that, you know, so I don't, that would have been a great thing to document here as like a specific thing that would have happened. That was a, you know, a two-way conversation with a student group that resulted in, in us moving forward, one of our larger district goals, you know what I mean? And I think that we could use more evidence of those kind of like, here's a strategic conversation that we had. And I mean, like Montessori might be one, because that's really trying to advance some equity there. But when I look at some of these other things, like the Equity Steering Committee, just in the title alone, but like, what are we doing? What, what are some of these other groups? What, what are they contributing? What's the conversation contributing? And so I don't know if this just needs indicator strengthening, I don't know if this needs documentation in a different way. But I feel like moving forward outside of the referendum, I really want to see how our community partnerships and specifically your involvement in them is impacting like outcomes for students. That could even be something like I was talking about earlier with, with how, how is that benefiting, you know, socio-economically disadvantaged students? What type of partnership is that impacting? So I would like to see a little bit more impact in this specific part of this policy. But other than that, I think it, it looks really good.
Would agree. I think there are ways to either strengthen the indicator or provide some evidence without link or two to certain, or updating the board, or citing an update to the board on a certain date, here's what we had done or here is this project or here is, but nope. I agree.
Dr. Farrar? Commissioner Todd?
Yes, on I, on some point with the rate of response being a lot lower this year, I just have your questions regarding method of communication, whether that was communicated the same way before in previous years? What other new ways was, we tried this year? Or how folks were asking to respond? I know that we send out texts and that kind of thing and emails, but I'm wondering what other ways have, other ways have the district attempted to collect response besides the traditional method of. And then because of the low response rate this year, I'm also questioning and wondering what other ways you're thinking about for next year's data collection? So that we can help to be more proactive, just response rates.
Dane, would you like to take that one on a little bit? We're, for example, when we were going to distribute this year's Family Climate Survey, kind of looking at main points to be able to, or, or certain areas or certain times. For example, if we had QR codes at the schools during parent or family teacher conferences, one example, but I think the timeline makes a little bit. If you wanted to address that a little bit, because you and I did talk about that weeks ago and as well as last week.
So as pertains to timing of a specific climate survey, most important thing is to have relatively consistent timeframe over time. But a lot of the literature about climate surveys don't specifically talk about the ideal time, unless you're looking at early, at the beginning of school year and near the end of the school year. However, if you're doing it once per year, there is no perfect time to do. As pertains to like additional strategies to try to get more response rates. One of the things that we did was for the Family Climate Survey, we're opening it one week early. It is formally scheduled to open from March third through the fourteenth, so a two-week period. But for the family survey, we're opening it two weeks, one week early, so that it will fall during family, uh, family teach conferences. And that is one very specific strategy. Principals have access to a QR code for the Family Climate Survey as well as direct links. So they have, they can share that, that available when families come through, so they can take that survey. There's also questions that families can have access to as well. So they can see the questions ahead of time, if they want to see that as they're preparing to, to answer the questions. So that level of visibility is really important. The other thing that we're hoping to do too as well is this particular year, we're going to be tapping into family services, who I've already spoken with, with some of the staff members. They've already been experienced in reaching out to their respective families. Whether they're Native families or Hispanic families or Mo' families or Asian families or others, to get additional voices, ensuring that those families are taking those, those surveys in timely manner during the period in which we have it open. And so those are some additional strategies that we have in place right now. And so there are other small initiatives that we have too as well. In past year, we did offer a statement that schools can share with their families as a reminder, because the family surveys come from the district. But schools have an opportunity to share a little bit of information about that too as well. And we're hoping that that, that strategy is going to be helpful to get more feedback from our families this year. I did also take a look at really briefly the racial opposition. And from year twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-three, twenty-four, the racial composition has become more representative than it was originally here. The exact numbers I can share later on, but that breakdown certainly is more representative breakdown than it was in the past, even though the numbers are lowered this year than the most recent year in the past two. I hope that answers your question about some of the strategies that we're using.
Yeah, they did. And I was also wondering how the board, where I can also help pass us, whether that be, you know, us or nothing, like talking about the survey or whatnot, so.
Well, as elected leaders, I think that the board has a lot of weight constituents about suggesting and recommending that they take the survey, because in addition to elected leaders. one part of being the voice to the schools, uh, families' voice and family input in this bigger capacity, very true as well. So certainly, uh, we have not yet in the past directly asked board members to distribute and those survey links to families. But I think that that's certainly something that we can discuss, see how we can do that in a more efficient way too.
Thank you, Dan.
Dr. Johnson?
You have my time.
Thank you. Uh, student reps? Uh, have anything to add either? So at this time, I would hear a motion to approve OE seven.
Second.
Cue. Any discussion or amendments on the motion? I'll just take that by light your light if you'd like to make a comment on the motion or make an amendment. None will call the question. The motion is to approve OE seven as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed? Any abstention? OE seven is approved. Commissioner Demant, if you'd send me the notes when you can, that would be helpful. Thank you. We have then, I think, you know, just one item left, and that is our regular board debrief survey. Thank you, Dr. Bika, for updating it to include Commissioner Tao at her first meeting that she's up. I was supposed to do that. I'd ask the board members at this time to click the link in the executive comment, content under the board debrief item and take the regular self-evaluation survey. And I'd ask the audience and board members, student reps to hold your conversation until our adjournment. It's you.
Okay.
Well, got it.
I'm sorry, I'm this is the first one. We all we all say this one. No, they don't. This is the one.
This time I would hear a motion to adjourn. Want to just do it all? Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Board members, remember to stop by Terry to sign all of those resolutions. I masterfully got us through.
Masterfully.
I don't remember it.
Okay. Okay, now I'm gonna come back here. I'm coming back.
I'm happy to still.
I know, I'm so excited.
Really the worst part is walking into the school from the apartment.
It really is. I've seen a hundred people like standing up stuff I couldn't do.
This one, man, this is next.
I just wanted to make sure that you didn't hear. I appreciate it. I mean, I thought I hated you at all.
You could, dude.